Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. We're gonna give everyone a minute. We have a extra surprise bonus speaker this morning. I'm gonna start our live stream on Facebook. Hi Joshua.
Is the person such a surprise that you're not even telling us right now?
Well, they're here.
David, I'm supposed to give a speech? Yes. Let's see.
Good morning Vice Mayor Kearney.
How you doing?
Good morning.
Good, how are you?
Good. I think my son hijacked my Zoom, so it always says Asher Kearney. Who's that? My seventeen year old.
Vice Mayor Asher Kearney.
Yeah, there you go. All right, maybe one day. How's everybody doing?
We are great.
Good.
We're gonna give everyone a couple more minutes to show up here and then we'll kick it off.
All right.
Thank you so much for being able to join us at the last minute.
Oh yeah, no problem.
I think we have the city's two favorite elected officials. And you all, I know we haven't gotten started yet, but if you can, turn on your cameras so we can take some nice screenshots of the group. We'll give it two more minutes.
Good morning, Jamashow.
Hey, how you doing?
Good. Is that Asher's picture I see up on billboards around town?
Yes, it is.
What a stunningly handsome young man he's been.
You're so sweet. All that wild hair. We're hoping they can make it to the barber shop today. So, how's everything going? You know, I sent you the information for the gun violence thing. I don't know if you got it. Did you get it?
Oh, did you? I'll check again. I sometimes neglect my email more than I should.
Okay.
But I'll check again. Thank you.
Presentations I wanted you to see.
Excellent. I watched the safety meeting from the eighth. And I'm really interested in the work that the Assistant City Manager and Iris Rulli are doing. That looks really wide in line with the work. And I hope we can be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. And now Iris is actually, she has an office in the city. I don't, I don't know. I don't, I think she starts next week. I'm not sure.
That's awesome.
But she's a consultant to make sure the collaborative agreement continues to move forward.
I'm so glad we're resuming that work. I think it was so important and so effective. You know, I remember the article that you guys in the Herald did, boy, in 2001, was it? Or 2002?
Yeah, 2001, yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was amazing work and it's really good to see it continuing to bear fruit.
Oh, thanks, Jack. I appreciate it.
All right. Should we go ahead and get started, Jared?
Yeah, we can go ahead and get started. Do we have all the students here?
I think we have most of the students here. I think a couple of people will roll in a couple of minutes late.
Okay, got it. All right.
It's Saturday morning. What can you say?
And being graduation, I don't know if I need to take attendance here, but maybe. All right, we can go ahead and get started. Welcome, welcome, everyone.
Caroline said she had a computer problem. She's trying to get in. She'll be with us momentarily.
Remember this, because that's actually very ironic for, for today. So, all right, so welcome, welcome, everyone. Thank you all for joining us to celebrate Action Tank Academy City Council Bootcamp Class of 2022 Graduation Ceremony. We definitely love long titles here at Action Tank. My name is Jared Marsh and I'm a program manager at Action Tank. It has been a privilege to work with these amazing change makers over the last six months. And concerning all the emails, reminders, and occasional Saturday morning class reminder phone call that is met by a tired and a bit grumpy, grumpy welcome. I am excited to and hope the students have enjoyed it just as much as we have. You'll get a chance to hear from more about the amazing City Council Bootcamp Class of 2022 in a moment, but I just want to recognize how unique this cohort is. Students hail from Cincinnati, Northern Kentucky, and throughout Ohio cities. They represent a diversity in all of its forms that make up this land we call home and people we call our own. They bring a passion for change and energy to upend the same old same. From affordable housing to equity to economic security and accessibility, these students and their policy parties are the sun shining on a new chapter in the city, state, and beyond. Without giving anything else away, I will hand it over to Action Tank's fearless leader and executive director, Yuana Peris.
Thank you, Jared. And welcome, everybody, to the graduation ceremony. We are thrilled to have you all here. Before I introduce our first speaker, I just want to give an overview of how this ceremony is gonna go. So first, we have our surprise bonus speaker, Vice Mayor Kearney, who's going to welcome us and share some words of wisdom and congratulations. And then we'll have Mayor Ashtab Pureval, who will say a few words. And then he also asked if he could take questions. So start thinking now of questions maybe related to your priorities that you would like to have the vice or the mayor answer. After that, Desiree Hostly, one of our students, will read a poem that she wrote just for this occasion. Following that, we will announce the class superlatives. And then we have a video that we made just for this graduation that we'll play for you all. Before we move on, I also have to thank our sponsors. So to the Hale Foundation and Eric Abner in particular, huge thank you. Without them and their support, City Council Bootcamp would never have existed. Thanks also to the Season Good Foundation, the Greater Cincinnati Foundation, Jens Rosenkrantz and the Annex Gallery, and MC and Tom Brennan for all of their support. And without further ado, I will hand it over to Vice Mayor Kearney.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much, Yuana and Jared and everybody. So let me say to the class, congratulations, you've made it through six months of Action Tank. Six months of in-depth learning about serving in local government. Learning how to be an effective city council member who can make impactful policy that brings positive change. What an accomplishment. Now, I don't know all of you. I know some of you. But my guess is that many of you got involved in Action Tank because you're frustrated with how things are. You're weary of waiting for them to fix it. Waiting for them to fix homelessness. Waiting for them to fix food deserts. Waiting for them to fix gentrification. Waiting for them to fix lack of affordable housing. Waiting for them to fix environmental challenges. Waiting for them to fix it. And while you were waiting, and I'm sure complaining, you realize that the them you were waiting for is you. Now, I never thought I would ever, ever be in public office. And sure, I was angry about all the brokenness that needed fixing. But, you know, I thought my, thought of myself as a behind the scenes person. You know, I published a newspaper. I practiced law. I served on a ton of boards. I did a lot of community work. I even spent a lot of time in City Hall arguing for my clients who were trying to maintain affordable housing in Mount Auburn. But public office, no, 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 that was not for me. Let me tell you, putting yourself out there is not easy and you're probably thinking about that now. So after being appointed to council in 2020, I opened a Twitter account. And one of the first comments that I received was, "You need to resign." I mean, I had not even been to a city council meeting. I hadn't taken a vote. I hadn't made a statement on any topic. So that's, you know, that's what happens when you put yourself out there. And then, you know, there's media. Now, I love our media. But after being in the newspaper business for, for the last few decades and hosting a public affairs show, you know, I do feel like I'm, I've been part of the media. But every now and then, I have to cringe at the soundbites. I tend to talk a lot. So, you know, God bless, and the journalists have to pick out a thirty second soundbite from all the stuff that I say. And, you know, sometimes it's not exactly the idea that I'm trying to convey. My favorite example, when I was interviewed about the Black Lives Matter mural that's in front of City Hall. So I did this interview and I talked about how the mural represented racial healing in our city. And it represented our value as a city to take a stand against racism, all this really positive stuff. And then the reporter asked me if we were going to close off the street in front of City Hall to make the area a pedestrian plaza. There had been a lot of talk about that. So, you know, my answer was, yeah, that might be a problem for the business across the street. The business across the street had already begged us not to do that. He said it would really hurt his business. He gave us a lot of reasons why. So, you know, I said, I'm not sure about that. I don't think that's gonna happen. All right, so when the story aired, there were all these soundbites from people talking about, you know, making positive remarks, how the mural represented racial healing. How it represented our value as a city to take a stand against racism. So I'm sitting there waiting for my similar soundbite. But the only part of all that positive, positive stuff I said was one negative soundbite about closing off the street for a pedestrian plaza. And my soundbite was, "That's not gonna happen." So, you know, I rarely call reporters after a story to complain. But I called this one and I said, "What was that? You made it look like I didn't support the Black Lives Matter mural." And he explained his story needed a comment about whether we'd close off the street in front of City Hall. I was that comment. You know, so you just move on and make a note to self, have to do better with soundbites. And I'm telling you, I'm still working on that. But honestly, I found that our journalists in Cincinnati work really hard to get it right. And they bring important issues to our attention. So I'm really grateful to them. And I have the, I'm saying this sincerely. I have the utmost respect for the press in Cincinnati. So all that is to say, don't be afraid to put yourself out there. You'll be fine. And please trust me on that one. You know, another fear that's even bigger than putting yourself out there is wondering if you really can make a difference. I mean, that's why you're in Action Tank, right? So I started in public office in March of 2020 at the beginning of the pandemic. And that timing taught me two lessons. Number one, it is important to serve because the need is great. When I came onto City Council, schools were closing, businesses were shutting down. People were losing their homes, hospitals were filling up, and people were dying. City Council passed policies to help businesses survive, to keep people from being evicted, to find shelter for those experiencing homelessness. Organizations such as Children's Hospital and Cincinnati Bell worked to get Wi-Fi to homes where there were school-aged children. And CPS was passing out computers to those families. I moderated more than forty town halls to dispel myths about COVID and to get the experts in front of our residents so that people had real information amid all of, all of the confusing information that was out there. And a lot of the work that I did on council had nothing to do with policy. It was organizing people to clean a community kitchen so meals could be provided. It was getting face masks to organizations who could distribute them. It was getting toys to schools to incentivize parents to pick up those academic packages. You know, every time someone says city council is a part-time job, I just have to laugh. I mean, it's really twenty-four seven. It doesn't stop. You'll find that out. But you know what? That's okay. Okay, number two. The second thing I learned that I really have to tell myself often is that you can't give up just because you can't solve everything. You know, change is not easy and you don't always succeed. Every time I hear about another person being shot, I wonder if any of us is really making a difference. You know, I recently read an essay by Senator Cory Booker of New Jersey. He talked about how he felt in his early years as a council member when he was first starting his political career. He told a story about a woman who came to him because some drug dealers had attacked the security guards in her building. And she wanted Cory to do something about it. He just sat there thinking, there was nothing he could do. There was nothing he could do. And this woman started screaming at him, "If you can't help, then why did we elect you?" So as he went home, he started thinking that nothing he had done had made any impact. And he hadn't even passed a meaningful piece of legislation. He hadn't changed the world. He hadn't changed anything. He thought that maybe he should give up politics and do something else with his life. So he arrived home, as you can imagine, in a really bad mood. And, you know, as always happens, there was a neighbor standing there wanting to talk. He said he tried to hurry past this elderly woman in his building because he just wanted to get into his apartment and shut the door. But this woman, Ms. Virginia Jones, stopped him. She demanded a hug, you know, as neighbors do. And then she insisted that he tell her what was wrong. So Cory just said, you know, he unloaded all of his frustrations and feelings of failure and inadequacy. He just let it all out. So let me tell you the rest of the story and Senator Cory Booker's words. In this essay, he wrote, "So Ms. Jones looked at me and said the words I had been waiting for. She said, 'I know what you should do.' I waited with bated breath for what seemed like an eternity for this wise and tough-loving elder to tell me what to do. And finally, she said with much enthusiasm, as if she were imparting her greatest wisdom upon me. She said, 'Cory, you should do something.'" I realized it was exactly what I needed to hear. And it is something I have carried with me since that day. The idea that we cannot let our inability to do everything undermine our determination to do something. So today, Action Tank, you are graduating. You are ready to make an impact. You are armed with the tools that it takes. Go ahead. Put yourself out there and do something. Thank you.
Yay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Kearney. All right. Well, it sounds like the mayor is running just a couple of minutes late. So Desiree, are you up for reading your poem now instead of after the mayor speaks?
Sure. Can you hear me? Am I here? All right, let me get myself together. Okay. All right, the poem is called Arts in Action. It is time. Time to reset our city. Open our minds to the evolution of a new council and become revolutionary. Unleash our worries and begin to correct the policies. Remember, the people are not afraid to. The people are not afraid to take back the streets, but it is better when we work together. Engage community. Collaborate to see the bigger picture. Because systems have to change. We want change. Whether we want to establish crisis intervention teams for mental health emergencies, our income equality and sustainable economic security. Who has the power to make that happen? Who has the power to make that happen? We, the people who want transparency. We, the people who want funding and resources for refugee groups. We, the people who want educational empowerment. We, the people who want equitable climate, resilient, who planning, I'm sorry, y'all. Here we go. We, the people who want increased education and food insecurity. We, the people who want trauma care for our violent interrupters. We, the people want to see humans flourishing with better access to city resources and improved public health outcomes. We want to find pride in our city. Our city, believe in our city that we can rebuild together the beauty that already exists. Yet this time, this time, we will be seen, heard loudly, clearly, defining our needs through, through each committee. We have what, we have what it takes to develop a better foundation. We have what it takes to develop a better foundation. But it starts with putting the systems in place to advocate. Talking to the people through voter registrations and policy reform. Putting the people in council. Action Tank prepping the next candidates who are eager to do more than talk. Yet put their words to action. Manifestations becoming reality. Equity and inclusion walking side by side. The proof is in our council. Ready to be televised, go viral. With next steps, look at this power. Feel this power. We are no longer waiting for change to come. We are the change. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Desiree. Desiree wrote the poem just for this graduation and she's one of our students. Without further ado, I see that Mayor Pureval's here and I will hand it over to him. I don't think he needs very much introduction, but we've asked him to say a little bit about what inspired him to public service, particularly in local government. Welcome, Mayor Pureval.
Yuana, thank you so much. Action Tank, thanks so much for having me on. My voice is slowly coming back. I lost it while screaming at the Super Bowl, willing the team to victory, but, but I'm so happy, so happy to be here. You know, I really want the balance of our time to be spent on, on a conversation about your passions, your priorities, your values, and how the city can reflect that. But I wanted to give, you know, just a, just a few remarks about why local government is so important, why I'm inspired frankly by, by all of you. First off, a wholehearted congratulations on this achievement and sincerely thank you for putting in the time and effort to make it here. This is, this is really no small accomplishment. Look, I'm, I'm guessing most of us in the Zoom recognize that city governments, whether here in Cincinnati or really anywhere else, that they, they don't have the same mass awareness as national politics. They don't have the, you know, the sensationalism or the everyday all or nothing storylines that keep folks tapped into actions of their senators or of their people in Congress. And, and that's not the only reason, but it's certainly part of the reason that most people just don't understand what their local government is. And most importantly, what their local government can be. And obviously, that's unfortunate and it's, it's something that we have to keep working on to try and fix. Because city governments and other local government bodies have the most data to impact on the lives of our constituents. When, when someone has a problem in their life, whether it's their housing or their street or their water bill, when, when they fear for their safety. Their city government is the place that most folks turn to. Their, their city government is the place where they can most quickly and effectively get in front of someone who can, who has the authority and power to fix or address their problem. But at the same time, it's the place where they're least likely to know how to access the resources available to them. And, and that's not their fault. You know, that's, that's our fault. City Hall can feel like a fortress. And even when someone hunkers down and searches out the right resources, it's still not always obvious where to go to find it. So it's our responsibility as public servants and community leaders and advocates to do everything in our power to educate and to go where people are in need of service, go and meet them where they are. The, the phrase "community engagement" can sometimes, you know, it sounds like an empty cliche, frankly. It's, it's a nice buzz, buzz phrase. And, and no one has ever gotten in trouble for emphasizing community engagement. But, but I can't stress enough, as you move today from one chapter in your path to the next, how important it really is. Engagement is foundational to every other goal that you want to accomplish. If there's one thing I can leave you with today, it's that we have to treat accessibility and engagement as something that we make happen for our constituents. We can never expect our constituents to figure out how to come to us because some will. But, but we'll leave far too many who depend on our services behind. That's exactly why we need more passionate, dedicated, proactive folks like all of you who go out of their way to step up and lead. Participation and the, the right motivation are everything. Some, some of you here may have a plan for where you want to go after this bootcamp. Some of you may still have no clue. All you knew was, was you wanted to take another step and learn more about the nuts and bolts of local government and advocacy. And, and that's fine. I, you know, I didn't have a clear path myself, but no matter how clear that path is, you've devoted your time to educating yourself on how to make an impact in your community. You pursued an opportunity to gain experience and civic engagement, to make honing your skills a priority. If you don't know exactly how you leverage this, and, and maybe I'm speaking to just a small fraction of this graduating class, but I, I think it's important. I want to emphatically say, start anywhere. Just, just show up. Reach out to an advocacy group that aligns with the impact you want to make. Look up local events and volunteer. Get involved with your community council. Show up to public comment. We'd love to have you at City Hall or reach out to me or a council member about something that demands our attention. And if you feel like you have something to give and you, if you feel like you've put in the work to educate yourselves on why and how you will serve, then I want to challenge you to run for something. Look, I mean, I, I've gotten in politics in 2016. When I first started, people thought I was, I was crazy. You've all maybe heard this story, but Democrats told me not to run for office. Democrats told me that I, that I, I wouldn't be able to be elected. And I was inspired by President Obama. You know, certainly our first black president, but as a multiracial person myself, I saw in him our first multiracial president. And, you know, he really convinced me that if you have a passion, if you want to work for your passion, you're only limited by the extent of your dreams and public service. In his last, in his last interview while in office, the interviewer asked President Obama, you know, what do you hope your legacy will be? And he didn't talk about Obamacare. He didn't talk about justice reform. He didn't talk about being the first black president. He said that he hoped that his presidency had inspired the next generation of leaders to take up the mantle, to pick up the clipboard, to help someone get elected or run themselves. He likened it to a wave that was washing over the country, that was cleansing it and pushing it forward. You and I are part of that legacy. And there are forces out there who will tell you that you can't, that you're too young, that you're too brown, that you're too, too female. And those people are wrong. I dare you to prove them wrong. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pureval. And now, each of our students, as they have gone through this course, chose a specific policy priority, researched it, drafted motions about it, drafted op-eds about it, came up with budget, ways to fund it in the budget. And I hope that folks have some questions about their policy priorities for the mayor. I might call out Joshua Pine and ask him to go first because his policy priority is something we've been discussing as a group for the last couple of sessions.
Sure. Thanks, Yuana. And thanks, Mayor, so much for, for being here this morning to speak with us. I think I think for all of us, and both appreciating you cheering on the Bengals loudly at the Super Bowl, but also in the lead up beforehand, really enjoyed seeing you on the national stage, amplifying all the great work that was happening in our city, both with our sports team, but also our policy initiatives. And so my question for you is whether or not you plan to continue to showcase the great work that's happening in Cincinnati and engage with peer cities through formally rejoining the National League of Cities?
Yeah, you know, it's, I, I've already spoken with, 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 with you, Josh, about it and spoken to, you know, other folks who are passionate about it. You know, I'm definitely, I'm certainly open to it. I want to learn more about what the commitments are and frankly, what the return on investment is. But look, you know, my, my, my biggest powers as a mayor is leveraging the bully pulpit, which my biggest powers as a mayor is leveraging the bully pulpit, which I'm not shy about doing, as we've seen. And then also my power of convening, not just convening leaders like yourself here locally, but convening national and even international leaders. And that is something that I'm not going to be shy about doing. I want to use that that tool in my tool bag as much as possible to to continue to frankly advocate for Cincinnati to be a destination, to brag about our progressive ideas that like preschool promise or like transforming our our public transportation system and, you know, other areas where we're leading, but also most importantly, steal the best ideas from around the country and around the world. So so Josh, it sounds like that organization is right in line with those priorities, but I'd love to just learn more about about what the expectation is for Cincinnati and what we can expect out of the organization.
Thank you so much.
Someone else have a question for the mayor?
How do you, Youwanna?
Yeah.
Hello, Mayor. Thank you for joining us this morning. Very, very precious child you have there.
My wife's working this weekend, so I'm doing double duty. That's why I was a little late to to join my
That's what parents do. I appreciate it.
That's right.
So I just want to ask, as Cincinnati grows and becomes super awesome on the national and international scenes, how will you listen to neighborhoods going forward? Perhaps neighborhoods that don't always get listened to? And how will you incorporate what they need?
Ashley, one second. My my son locked the door and is now pounding on it. One second.
Sure. Keep the door open, okay?
Didn't know you would get
Thank you. It's a really important question. You know, I my remarks talked about community engagement. My love, will you keep the door open, please? Okay, he's not going to listen to me. So yeah, so you know, first and foremost, the principles in my view of community engagement is to of course be accessible and transparent as much as possible to all of our communities, but but doing more than that, being out in the community, having regular town halls, being regularly accessible to folks and and institutionalizing it, right? So J. Michelle Lemon Kearney, our Vice Mayor, I see that she's on. She can she can probably speak more to this, but she had she co-authored an ordinance that required our city administration to institutionalize community engagement. But we're going to do more than that. I announced last week that I'm I'm having Mayor's Night Night Out and also Mayor's Night In. So periodically, myself, the city manager and our top kind of consumer facing directors will be out in various rec centers, meeting with constituents and directly connecting them in their neighborhood to the city services that they need most. I'm also doing Mayor's Night In, which is which is kind of inspired by the West Wing. I'm a massive West Wing fan for our younger people at home. They have no idea what I'm talking about. But there there's an episode in the West Wing called Big Block of Cheese Day, where anyone could get an appointment with senior staff at at the White House. So we're doing that at City Hall. Anyone can get anyone can get a 15 minute appointment with me. I'm going to be there for, I think, two or three hours. And we're going to do that consistently through through my administration. So, you know, look for look for small and big ways for us to be out in the community, asking people what they thinking. And again, stealing their best ideas that we can run with as city leaders.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley. Someone else have a question, burning question for the mayor?
Yes, Mayor, my name is Robbie Bluestein and I'm two time former president of Camp Washington Community Council. And I was very concerned about District Five location. Bottom line to it is, is I participated, you talk of participation, in every event this city put on to determine the location. They determined the location and unfortunately Columbia Parkway slid down the hill. Since that time, we have not had any positive response from the city administration. And even though there's an ordinance that talks about community engagement, we have been nothing but stonewalled about where District Five is going to go. And the choice of the planning department at that time was the old Business and Permits Center on Central Parkway. And we've been told that's no longer going to be the right spot. If there's anything you can do to help us get a District Five that is something we would be proud of, like the West Side is a District Three, we would appreciate that very, very much. Thank you.
Excuse me. Thank you, sir. You know, District Five continues to be a challenge for City Hall and for and for CPD. I will say, though, that excuse me, I have something in my throat. I will say that the Cincinnati Police Leadership came in front of budget and finance. I'm going to get some water. Excuse me. This is going to keep happening.
All right. Does anyone else have questions? Just to show a hand. Martin does. Jack does. Okay, we're in the middle of Robbie's. I might ask about community benefits agreements also. Maybe Danny and Ashley help us think of a really good historic preservation question.
I am so sorry, Youwanna. I'm an absolute mess this morning. You guys are very patient and generous for for hanging with me. So I think it was Robbie that asked me the question. So the the Police Department came in and gave us their funding priorities. And their top funding priority is is a recruit class, maybe one or two recruit class, to make sure that we have enough police officers to do the job of preventing violent crime and and holding violent criminals accountable. We have twin challenges with our Police Department of smaller and smaller recruit classes paired with an ever increasing number of retirements, which is putting a stress on the number of police officers out on the street doing the job or responding to calls from citizens. So that without question is the top funding priority. Obviously, District Five continues to be a priority. The challenge, sir, is is a funding challenge more than it is a location challenge. So, you know, I can I can absolutely commit to you that when the city finds the dollars, and it may require some federal dollars, finds the dollars necessary to relocate District Five, there will be a robust and comprehensive community engagement strategy to make sure that as much as possible, the community is aligned to where the location will end up.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And then I saw Jack had his hand up first and then Martin.
Good morning, Mayor Piroval. How are you?
I'm great. How are you, Jack?
Doing well. I've been active in gun violence prevention and working with the violence interrupters here in the city. And I'm hoping we can can help them out. But I have a specific question through my work at Christ Church Cathedral. We're really interested in hosting a summit of some sort that we did one a couple of years ago with Violence Interrupters, specifically Mitch Morris. And at that time, the summit was sort of used to bring us together and just kind of wring our hands about the the state of gun violence. But we'd like this upcoming summit that we're hoping to put on to answer specific questions. And I'm just wondering, and I saw the Assistant City Manager and Iris Rowley's presentation at the February 8th Safety Committee Meeting. What are the specific questions that we think if we had an answer that that we could then take a meaningful step forward on reducing gun violence?
Yeah, it's a good question. So you know, I think the I the 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 causes of the gun violence right now are are multifaceted, as as we all know. I mean, the root cause of it of it of the violence is poverty, but that is such a and and my administration leading with Vice Mayor Kearney, we are doing a number of things to address poverty from a racial equity perspective, whether whether it's climate or or public safety or affordable housing. It's a comprehensive approach to try and lift people out of poverty. But in the short term, to interrupt the gun violence, you know, the the challenge that we have is the proliferation and availability of illegal guns in our community. I mean, they are ubiquitous. And so working with our federal partners to make sure that the U.S. Attorney's Office, the FBI and the ATF is working with us to prevent the importation of illegal guns and their distribution in our cities through our gun, our Gun Crimes Intelligent Unit, where we have federal prosecutors at the beginning of the investigation to prevent these illegal guns from coming in is critically important. So there's a law enforcement aspect of this, of course. But there's also a political aspect. I mean, you know, because of of the restrictions that the state legislature has put on us, there's very little cities can do as it relates to sensible gun reform. But, you know, instead of instead of doing positive things on sensible gun reform at the federal, even the state level, our state legislators recently made it even easier without any training or licensing to carry a concealed weapon, which is going in the opposite direction that we need. So that would be that would be, you know, one and two. Number three, and this is a little bit more difficult to put our fingers on, but we have seen evidence that the proliferation of social media has turned arguments and and disagreements that used to be that used to be resolved through fistfights into into gun violence. And that is because of the kind of social pressures, the embarrassment, the kind of social status that is exacerbated and inflamed by social media. So it it exacerbates those kind of beefs and makes them into life or death situations for our young people. And so we're trying to think of creative ways to intervene on, not to censor social media, but to creative ways to intervene on that, to to lower the temperature of some of these arguments. I'm actually going to Louisville with or excuse, no Nashville with the U.S. Attorney Ken Parker, the new U.S. Attorney, the top federal prosecutor in the Southern District, where they have de-escalation centers. Because oftentimes, the neighborhood and neighborhood leaders know about violence that's about to pop off before law enforcement does. And so as the de-escalation centers are almost like ad hoc mediations that happen quickly to try and squash the beef. There there's some some interesting evidence coming out of Nashville on the effectiveness of these de-escalation centers. So the U.S. Attorney and I are going to go down there to learn more.
Wonderful. And Martin, did you question that?
Yes, yes. My question was pertaining to affordable housing. You just mentioned that we'd like to pull some of the people from poverty to most, the majority of the set aside monies used for multiple multiple units instead of single family housing, which would definitely help the community stabilize and be more self sufficient. So what's your view on putting more of those funds towards single family houses instead of the multi units?
All right. And it's a great question. Look, you know, I want more housing, right? I mean, I I think you're right. I think we need to continue to prioritize single family housing, but but we need more units across the board. And and the the Vice Mayor who's on here, what I think will be speaking soon, I'll let her talk about her specific initiatives, but she has been laser focused on black homeownership, on creating more opportunities for black families to get access to brick and mortar homes rather than the focus on renting. But and and so and we're devoting real dollars in order to get that done. In fact, the Vice Mayor and I just announced two days ago that we're putting $5 million of federal funds into the Housing Affordable Trust Fund, which will help, which will provide some grants to help black families get access to dollars to put down payments on homes. Excuse me. And not only that, we also, for the first time ever, announced a substantial and dedicated stream of revenue towards the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to the tune of $1 million year over year, which will grow in the near future to 2.5, at least $2.5 million year over year. Right now, there's $57 million in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That money is going to continue to grow over time because of this kind of historic commitment of funds that the Vice Mayor, myself and other council members made just a couple of days ago. The port is doing a lot of interest, getting a lot of national attention for some for doing some interesting things around around building homes and specifically working with black families to get access to funds to buy those homes. And so it's it's certainly a priority of ours and we'll continue to to keep an eye on it. You know, the sad fact is our black homeownership numbers lag far behind those of our white homeownership numbers. And the pandemic has only exacerbated that delta. So so what I can commit to you is we're going to continue to find ways to fund these efforts. And Vice Mayor Kearney, this is her top priority for her term. So she has some exciting things coming up to announce.
Thank you so much. Can I just ask a follow up question? What is the dedicated revenue stream of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
It gets a little bit wonky, but this is a wonky group, so better better to tell this group than anyone else. So we have, we have amended our stabilization budgetary policies. So in a nutshell, it our Budget Office is very conservative as it relates to revenues that the city is bringing in and very pessimistic as it relates to costs that are expenditures, money that's going out. So as a result, in in most years, because of that budgeting principle, we have surplus funds at the end of the year. Sometimes in the in the tens of millions, a lot of a lot of money. Because of we are continuing to try and get a top credit rating from agencies, we have a policy of 16.7% of that surplus must go towards reserves, kind of cash that we're holding on to to back up our credit. And so the the stabilization, the stabilization amendment says that in addition to the 16.7, we're now going to dedicate a percentage of that surplus every year right off the top to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, to the tune of $1 million. Now, the reason why that's going to grow is because we have almost hit our goal of 16.7% in our reserves account balances. We're very close to hitting our goal. So once we top that out and have 16.7% in our reserves moving forward, we'll have even more money to 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 use on on various issues. And so we will increase the amount of money put that we put into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund once we hit that 16.7%. Now, there's still going to be, you know, there's still going to be some surplus after that. And so that's why you see at the end of the year, a lot of like the Roll Hill Boys and Girls Girls Club got got funded through the these surplus funds. A lot of the times, you know, big, important issues that didn't didn't have enough money to be funded during the budget cycle, get funded at the end of the year through surplus. That will continue to happen. But instead of it being just kind of a free for all, we're putting some some limits based on our priorities about where we think this money should go. So it's not just the issue of the day getting getting money, if that makes sense.
Thank you so much for explaining that to all of us. Just one more question, if you don't mind. I know Ibrahim had a question and he has a really cool policy priority.
Great.
Ibrahim, you're muted.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for being here with us today. I just have a question and my question is tied into the answer that you gave to Sir Robbie earlier when he was asking you about the location of the, I mean, the new location for the District Five Police Department. And in your reasoning, you, you know, kind of stated that basically the CPD, you know, actually, the priority for the CPD was to kind of run a couple of recruitment because of retirement and so on and so forth. So just wondering, you know, which ties into my policy priority, of course, in your effort to kind of, or at least in the the effort of the Police Department to kind of recruit. Is there any effort to kind of recruit like immigrant, you know, culturally diverse, you know, people so that, you know, it can help the Police Department? And that goes along, you know, with also, you know, kind of hiring, you know, some kind of diversity within the fire department as well, which is my main focus and my priority. Because, as you mentioned, violence is not just, you know, it's kind of multifaceted. It goes through any community. And immigrant community are kind of targets of those violences as well. So just thinking if there's any effort that has been made towards kind of hoarding immigrants to kind of, you know, be able to recruit some of them within the first responders to kind of help with the community.
Thank you, Ibrahim. It's it's an incredibly important question and it's very timely because just this past week, local reports just this past week, local reports suggest that Asian business owners' homes are being targeted for break-ins. And so, you know, that coupled with the rise of API hate. And obviously, you know, the targeting of immigrant populations, which are often the most vulnerable, particularly in the Hispanic community where there's, there's fear, legitimate fear of engaging with our government officials for fear of being targeted or deportation or, or the like. So it's, it's critically important that we have a culturally diverse and culturally aware police department, not just police department, but, but entire city government. The challenges that we face are, are again multifaceted. You know, unfortunately, we have had this extraordinary consent decree over the last 40 years that put quotas, just straight up quotas on the, the amount of black officers hired and, and it's the word I'm looking for. Moving up the chain of, of the organization, promoted is the word I'm looking for. Straight up quotas that unfortunately has been found unconstitutional. We were sued by the Department of Justice. And, and while it's on appeal, it is very, very, I mean, quotas are, are very unconstitutional. So that is, that is unlikely to be held up. And so the, the consent decree was very successful. I mean, we, you know, just had a black, I think our last three chiefs were African Americans. We have very good numbers across our leadership. Well, not very good, but we have good numbers across our leadership at CPD as it relates to folks who are promoted. But now that that consent decree is gone, this, this is a challenge. This is a timely challenge, Ibrahim, that you're, that you're raising. One of the things that we're trying to do is work with the Department of Justice to ask them, okay, what, what are the best practices across the country that you've seen short of quotas? To make sure that we have a culturally diverse City Hall and culturally diverse police department. And so we're working with the Department of Justice to get those strategies and of course we'll implement them. But the, one of the strategies that we have here locally that is actually in our charter is the Public Safety Academy, which was a really good idea where the both police and fire and EMS said, well, you know, if, if we want diverse talent, let's just grow them from home. Let's create a pipeline of diverse talent from Cincinnati Public Schools to, to our police and fire departments. And so we created this program called the Public Safety Academy. Unfortunately, so far it's really only been used by, by fire effectively. Part of the challenge with the Public Safety Academy for police is that you have to be 21 years old to be a police officer. And so when you graduate from high school, it's not so easy to just go become a police officer. And so we're thinking of creative ways to partner with Cincinnati State to allow those graduates of the, of the Public Safety Academy who want to become police officers to get graduate school education, to put them in civilian roles inside the city or inside the police department to allow them to get old enough to apply to be a police recruit. So we're, we're coming up with creative, creative ways to address it. But Ibrahim, if you have specific ideas, now's the time because that consent decree is going away. And this is a real challenge for us to maintain a diverse police department.
Encouraged, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Mayor, do you have time for one more question?
Yeah, absolutely. My son has eaten a cookie, so this is going to keep.
Danny, did you want to go ahead?
Yes. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry about your throat. I'm glad it seems to be feeling better now. I was rooting for it. You must have been rooting hard for the Bengals the other night. So I'm a community activist and have been for 10 years. And my experience is that when a community rallies and does an email campaign and brings out many folks to City Hall on an issue, if there is a powerful player on the other side, we lose every time. And that can be very demoralizing. We saw it recently with a, a community effort in West Price Hill that happened this past week and with the Schulte Mansion, where they went to great lengths, spent a lot of money, the community really voiced its clear preference that that building be saved. But unfortunately, for whatever reason, a majority on council voted against that. And what can we do to give council members the cover they need to vote their conscience? I don't know if it's conscience or vote with the community when there's an entity on the other side, be it a corporation or, you know, in this case, it was the Boys and Girls Club. And I suspect that the council members were afraid that the media would paint it as going against the Boys and Girls Club. And I mean, how do we ensure that when a community spends that much passion and effort and, and actual resources that it, there's some return on that investment so that people don't get demoralized and say, well, I'm just not going to show up?
So it's a, it's a very smart and, and, and good question. It's tough to answer. You know, I think I can only speak for this, well, I can't really speak for this council, but I can, I can speak for what I've observed with this council. And I can't really speak to how it's happened in previous councils, because I, you know, I'm very new to City Hall and very new to this process. The Schulte Mansion issue, I think, I think was really tough. Because you have council members who have made it very clear what their priority is, which is youth engagement, reducing violence, racial equity, investing in particularly black youth. But also on the other side, community engagement. And so I think from, I think from where, Danny, where, where you sit, your, I can understand why your perspective is the other side spent a lot of money and you know, and, and maybe there was fear about going up against the Boys and Girls Club. You know, from my perspective, it wasn't really about that. I mean, oftentimes it is. I mean, I'm not naive. Oftentimes money speaks. But in this instance, and I think in, in instances moving forward with this council, it was, the, the challenge was you had two big priorities coming head to head. And there was, and for whatever reason, there wasn't an opportunity for a compromise. There was no kind of win-win solution. And, and so council members really, you know, they really agonized about that vote and they, and it was not an easy vote and they took the community engagement very seriously. And, and many of them, you know, I think met with community members and took tours of, of the, the community. And so I think my only advice to you is to not be disheartened. Obviously, didn't, the result wasn't what you were looking for, but the result wasn't what you were looking for because the council members thought it was, it was important to put, to put, to prioritize gun violence, you know, racial equity, youth engagement. It wasn't because they were prioritizing big money or, or a fear of the media. And hopefully that will give you some sense that it was an honest fight, right? It was an honest conversation. The, the, the scales were not tipped one way or the other. And, you know, I, I lose all the time. I lose, I lose publicly all the time. And I mean, just take a look at The Enquirer today and you'll see that I'm getting, getting crushed. But, but you know, it, what is important is that the playing field is equal, that the council members are going to be listening to both sides of the argument and internalizing both sides and trying to do what they think is right. And I hope you can have belief in that and we will work hard to try and continue to maintain that relationship with our community.
Thank you. That does give me solace hearing that response. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Piroval. We won't keep you any longer. We can hear your son asking for your attention. We really appreciate you joining us this morning.
Thank you, guys. Have a great day and congrats.
All right. So I have a couple, like a minute of remarks. I can tell you how many times during this class that I've been shocked all over again, that you all signed up to spend six hours a day for over a dozen Saturdays and a handful of evenings learning about local government. We tried to make it fun by incorporating improv and acting and poetry, but it's still shocking. So thank you for bringing your attention and enthusiasm and willingness to research city ordinances in the same class that we made you leave improv exercises for 30 people on Zoom and for writing budget motions for the same course where you had to create plans for using art to engage the public on policy proposals. I can't wait to see those art projects in real life, by the way. It is so obvious that it would be easy not to say it, but City Council Bootcamp is only successful because our students showed up and shared themselves and their passions and their diligence with each other. And we are so excited to watch what you do next because COVID and police brutality and the housing crisis and pedestrian safety and equitable development are not going anywhere until people like you rise to the challenge of tackling them with bold, creative, sometimes boring, but always brilliant solutions. We are so proud of you. Congratulations and thank you. So before we announce the class superlatives, Jared, I think has an announcement on the fundraising competition?
All right. The moment everyone has been waiting for, but I do have to say you might be a bit disappointed. So we have decided you're, everyone is so tired of hearing this, I know, but due to COVID, many groups had to push back their fundraising activities. And so we recognize that many were planning for January and February. You know, had recently pushed up. So we are giving some leeway and going to allow those groups to finish up their events so that they can be considered in the fundraising competition for a free dinner. So we will definitely keep you all updated when those events have happened. And, and with that, I know you're a bit disappointed there, but we will still keep the competition on. And once those events have happened, we will definitely announce the winners to everyone.
Awesome. Okay. Now on to class superlatives. Jared, you move first.
Yes. All right. So for this class superlative, the past few years have given us countless examples for how public officials should not conduct themselves. From corruption to political stalwart to pay to play, the acts of transparency, respect and accountability must be the norm and not the exception. And who better to lead this and voted most likely to be nominated Chair of the Sunshine Committee than our very own Jamie Castle? So congratulations, Jamie. And Ibrahim was someone who had voted for you. And Ibrahim, if you would mind just saying, you know, a few words about why you voted for Jamie?
Jared, thank you. Thank you for putting me on the spot. But first of all, I'd like to thank everyone, each, you know, member of the court, number two, you know, have been very professional. But particularly, I would like to say that Ms. Jamie has been very, very supportive of the ideas that we developed through the, you know, our sessions. And also what, you know, struck me a lot, you know, a lot more was that during our, you know, you know, work, you know, when we work, you know, in pairs and in groups, I see that her contribution is very, very, you know, positive based on her experience as a previous City Council member, candidate, as you know, City Council member. And also she has a very contagious smile. You know, whenever you look at her, you feel like you need to smile. She may be disagreeing with you, but then with a smile on her face. And quite a few times, she's been able to redirect, you know, ideas with a smile, even though they're not. So before even we talked about saying yes, you know, I learned the yes from her. She was, take whatever idea you put forth and then say yes. And then without saying a but, she will kind of redirect it. And it is kind of helpful and it helps you want it to be, you know, kind of working with her all the time. So thank you, Ms. Jamie. And I think she is a very good, you know, collaborator, someone who can work with anybody. It's easy for, you know, for her to get along with a lot of individuals.
Thank you, Ibrahim.
A good thing for me to be part of.
Congrats, Jamie.
Congratulations. All right. Next. And 80% of success is showing up and few people show up more consistently than our student who was voted most likely to have perfect attendance at council meetings. She does more than show up. Of course, she shows up prepared, thoughtful, positive and supportive of her fellow students. Because of her relentless commitment to showing up fully and always rising to the occasion, Carolyn Miller was voted most likely to have perfect attendance at council meetings. And then Joshua, did you agree to say a couple, explain why you voted for Carolyn?
I didn't get roped into this, but it is not a, a hard task to do. Carolyn, as the leader of our group, was always the most prepared, had very detailed agendas ahead of all of our meetings, would always check in to make sure that we are meeting consistently ahead of our fundraising goals, making sure that we are prepared for our homework. So I am very honored that Carolyn was voted for this award. It is, she's, she's the best.
All right. And so Carolyn, you missed it. When you were running late to me, I was gonna say, it'd be very ironic if you had to miss today or we're going to be very late today considering the awards. So.
You're like completely shut down. So I was like, great. So.
We'll give you a pass. All right. So on to the next one. It goes without saying that our country is not perfect and this form of governance is definitely still an experiment. When things get shaky, we often look to our leaders for guidance. This requires a great deal of responsibility and empathy from a leader, something that should not be taken for granted. But we don't take this person for granted and it seems neither do others. So without further ado, voted most likely to become president someday, I give you Joshua Case. Joshua, congratulations. All right. And I believe Kamara had voted for Joshua. So if you wouldn't mind just saying a few words.
Absolutely. I just thought this person was absolutely a no-brainer. Josh is huge in the community and he's taught me so much as well. And he has the presence and diplomacy that will really take him far. And I can just see him either being the next mayor or even congressperson. So I mean, I just thought that he was the perfect candidate and, you know, that's why I voted for him. So congratulations, Josh. So one day we'll vote for you.
Congrats, Josh. All right. This democratic experiment is based on the revolutionary belief that people are fit to govern themselves, that ordinary people's voices matter, even if they are not powerful or wealthy or well-known. It is hard to imagine someone more passionate about community engagement than the student, student voted most likely to lead public engagement reform. Kamara Douglas. Renee agreed to say a couple of things about why she voted for Kamara.
Yes, congratulations, Kamara. I voted for Kamara because of every time we had any kind of interaction where Kamara had to be part of the, the movement. She is just so dedicated. And the way that she expresses herself and her beliefs in what our local government should be like, it was a no-brainer for me. So congratulations, Kamara, and congratulations on your new job. And you will be perfect, I'm sure.
All right. Thank you. Congrats. So next we have, regardless of which side you're on, elected officials often find themselves on the end of crises and also the might of people. Politics is not a space known for its kind words, so it goes without saying that it takes a special leader to be revered by their constituents. This sentiment is shared amongst classmates because voted most likely to receive a compliment during public comment is Charity Bonifell. So congrats, Charity. And Elaine, you had voted for Charity, if you mind saying a few words.
Sure. Congratulations, Charity. I voted for you most likely to receive a public comment because the story behind your policy priority is so personal, heartfelt and comes from a absolute genuine place. I think it's safe to say that we all admire that you're taking such a difficult experience to help others and that you're fighting hard to keep anyone else from having to go through that. And I just think the personal story that you have to add to it definitely makes sense that you would get, it was a no-brainer, like everybody else is saying. I just, it was a no-brainer.
Thank you very much. My dog is also here for emotional support.
Thank you all. Thank you all so much for your support this whole time. It's it's been priceless. And I I can't thank you all enough for everything that you've provided to me emotionally and mentally and just uh your friendship is invaluable.
Congratulations, Charity. Last but definitely not least, uh those of us who enjoy privileged positions in society have a responsibility to use that privilege to advocate for others. The student was gifted with a powerful voice and never hesitates to use it to serve others less privileged than himself. The student voted most likely to receive a key to the city for exemplary public service and or advocacy is Jack Joes. And Kevin agreed to say a few words.
Yeah, thank you and congrats, Jack. So I did some research before voting on this, um because I didn't know, you know, what's the history of the key to the city. So it's a, it's a medieval tradition that confers trust and honor. And um basically, it's it's given to someone in medieval medieval times that had twenty-four hour access to a walled city that was literally guarded during the day and and locked at night. And it symbolized that that recipient was a trusted friend of city residents. Uh well, Jack, in my opinion, you're a perfect representation of this concept. So, you know, in our personal interactions, I was always impressed with the feedback that you gave me. The energy, passion that you had for your policy priority, the ideas that you shared, questions that you had um during class. It's clear that you had that, you know, a a strong desire to improve your community and city. So ultimately, I couldn't think of a a better person who represents the idea of being a a trusted friend um for the city and and all its citizens. So congrats again.
Congratulations. Go ahead, Jack.
I I just want to say thank you, Kevin. I enjoyed our time working together. I have you written down as someone to call upon if if and when I present to City Council on on an issue that I know you're also interested in, but um is not your main priority focus. Um I'm I'm honored. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations, everybody. And now, uh and rather than read everyone's names, because we don't have a stage for folks to walk across, uh we thought we would um try to make it a little more fun, and and we made a video. So here we go. Can you all see this?
Yes.
Okay.
Ibrahim Amidou.
Robbie Bluestein.
Charity Bonifell.
Renee Bolton.
Jamie Castle.
Kamara Douglas.
Elaine Fay.
Ashley Feist.
Logan Francisco.
Desiree Hossley.
Jack Joes.
Joshua Case.
Susan Kestrenin.
Carolyn Miller.
Joshua Pine.
Martin Rutland.
Kevin Sullivan.
All right, that's it, everybody. You're officially graduated. Congratulations. Yay.
I'm gonna get loud now, so. Good job, everybody. I'm gonna miss you a lot, you know, my email, though.
Yes, well, we will miss you too, and um I will send out some events soon. Uh hopefully, as it warms up, we'll we'll have some happy hours. We're definitely having an event at Black Coffee on March thirty-first. Um it'll be a combo city council night class and just fun hangout, happy hour party time. So we hope you can come and engage with each other. Any final words before we wrap it up?
That's what I'm saying. This is great. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I look forward to working with you.
Yeah, everyone, please call us anytime or email or text if you um are looking for support uh for your efforts. Okay, have a wonderful Saturday and congratulations.
Yes, everyone.